Special call meeting for Tuesday, March 1st, 2022 to order of the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners. I want to welcome everybody here this morning. We'll begin our meeting with the pledge, excuse me, with the invocation given by Commissioner Harvey and the pledge led by Commissioner Turner. If everybody please stand.
Father, our heads, gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for a lovely day and wonderful day here in Putnam County today. Let us deliberate, let us move Putnam County forward with our decisions that we're making. Father, we all love Putnam County and we just ask that your mercy and guidance come into our life. Give us direction from your throne room today, Father. We ask all things in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey, and thank you, Commissioner Turner. Paul, can you text Administrator Suggs that you're here? We were holding off, thank you for coming, for making it. Okay, well, welcome everybody this morning. I want to recess the regular board meeting and convene the Port Authority. I'll move that around.
Okay.
Okay. So we're opening up the Port Authority and we have an item on the agenda, emergency item is the rail spur at the Port Authority. Money, our building, our property out at the port. So we have with us this morning Chad and Sam and Jeremy from Veritas Steel. And this particular time, I'd like to turn it to Julianne to just kind of give us an overview of where we are and what they've come up with as far as the cost to repair this rail spur.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner. As we discussed last Tuesday, this has all been a very quick and fluid situation. Our track was shut down due to the rail being out of compliance with CSX specifications. They no longer are going to allow short-term repairs and have requested a long-term repair in order to open that track. That track services CSX, I'm sorry, services Veritas in getting their steel in. So several questions that came up from the last board meeting, and as you guys will remember, it was an emergency item. So we were bringing you information very quickly. Veritas knew from day one, they had a portion of the track that needed to be repaired. We knew from day one, there was a portion of our track that needed to be repaired as requested by you all. This is broken down so that you can see exactly which portion is Veritas', and exactly which portion is of the rail that we possess. There was some concern over the payment terms, so we have worked with WJSAP to revise the payment terms to pay 50% when materials are on-site, which is a little bit better than actual materials cost because materials cost of the project is kind of closer to 65%. So they agreed to just keep it at 50% to be payable when the materials are here and on-site. And then obviously, the remaining paid at the time that the repairs are complete. The request for a map showing the track depiction and repairs is, has been included. Been working with WJSAP to determine the best course of action in order to make sure that we do not limit or limit in the least capacity the traffic flow on Comfort Road, obviously, given the fact that they have that southbound entrance that gets blocked at, for a substantial amount of time. We're continuously working through that progress to the extent that CSX will agree to work with us in that, in that realm. Veritas is here. We did have some meetings to determine if there were some alternative options or any additional options that we could explore. And Veritas is very willing to partner with us in any of those options. However, we do have 30 days from the, we have about 12 left remaining before we, our track potentially could be shut down if we do not have agreed-upon long-term plan for CSX to allow us to move forward. So that's where we are today. Our repairs, as they stand today, are 413 and some change, and Veritas' are roughly 75. And again, Sam and his team is here, and so if the board has questions of them, we're welcome to entertain.
Okay, all right, thank you, Julianne. We'll go ahead and start with Commissioner Questions, and I'll start with Commissioner Turner.
I think that when we put this off till today, we did it because we wanted questions answered. And I think all those questions have been answered and adequately answered. The payment terms were changed to where they're more than acceptable to me. I had some problems with the earlier payment terms, but these are very, very good payment terms in my book. So I'm ready to move this forward this morning.
Thank you, Commissioner. You brought up a great point, and let me just address it because Commissioner Adams did ask if we had looked at alternatives, and I forgot to give you that update. We did meet with Veritas, and they're obviously the expertise, but we did look at alternatives to bringing steel in. It is not economically feasible. It would prohibit them from being competitive in their market. When we talked to them yesterday, a train car is bringing 80 tons of steel in one train car. To the number of transport trucks that would have to be running, plus the cost of transporting them, would make the majority of their jobs, if not all of them, not feasible. The other logistic issue is that their steel plants, obviously, are operating train car to train car right now. So if they had to stop, load it onto a transport truck, multiple transport trucks, and to bring it down to us, obviously, there's quite a bit of cost difference. And Veritas has, had already done all of that research. They had looked at it for the jobs that they have. So I didn't want to be remiss in not answering that question that was brought forward last Tuesday.
Okay. So like I said, I believe all the questions have been adequately answered that were, that we had, that I had concerns over the other day. I'm glad that we took the time to break this out like it is now, where there's a clear delineation. The only thing that I would like to request in here is to ask WJSAP Company if we could save money by direct purchasing the material for this project or the steel rails or something, and we wouldn't have to pay the sales tax that he, that he would probably have to pay. And so, and it could be that we just don't have enough time to get this going, but it shouldn't take that long to set up a direct purchase, if that's a possibility. So I would like to request that we ask that question of WJSAP, and that's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I concur with Commissioner Turner. I think it's wonderful that we kind of put the brakes on it, came back, looked at all the options, and come up with a reasonable plan to move this project forward. It is economic development for our county, I'll always say that. It's keeping people employed, and we have fixed roads before for that. So I'm ready to move forward, and I'm going to support this project as presented today. Thank you, Commissioner Turner, for your questions on that.
Okay, Commissioner Adams.
Yes, did we get feedback, how many employees do they have out?
We did. They currently, their plant runs with 119. They only have four vacancies, so they're at 115 today. And they have, obviously, as we all do, plans of growth and expansion. So we certainly, that's a, we expect that to be a base number that we will see grow.
And then, did we have any discussions about us giving them the rail spur? Negotiating to move the rail spur out of the county to a private enterprise? Because this could become an ongoing expense? Or did we discuss anything about sharing the costs of our portion with them being the only single user at the end of the rail?
We did not have any conversation regarding the acquisition of the rail spur. We did have conversation regarding a potential request from this commission about all sort of costs associated with the project. But the rail spur discussion of whether or not we maintain or give this rail spur away is going to have to be a discussion that would be driven by the Board of County Commissioners. And I don't think it would have been appropriate at the time for us to discuss that issue with Veritas Steel.
What was the second part, I had a second part there?
The second part of what?
Cost sharing, our $413,000 with them being the-
We did have that conversation, and the conversation was this, this may come up at today's meeting, and it would be up to them if they wanted to address any further assistance with the project. But they were willing to look and see if there was any cost-associated savings with the purchase of the steel. We did have that conversation with them yesterday, and when we left them, they were going to have some internal conversations amongst themselves and their folks in their corporate office about what else they might be able to assist with.
So can they give us an update on that since you're here?
I was going to go through Commissioner comments unless it's okay for them to come up now. I was going to go through-
I'm just fine with going through-
Okay, Commissioner Rawls, and then I was going to have, Sam, is that okay? I'll have you all come up and then talk a little bit about what we discussed yesterday about the, maybe the getting the steel through you and even maybe a cost share. Commissioner Rawls?
This is described as an emergency situation, but the data of this report is from 2014. I guess the question I have is, has there been anything issued since then to us? How do we, how do we find out that this was going to be shut down? Was it just a telephone call?
They locked the, they put a padlock on the gate and sent an email that said, I'm sorry, on the rail, and sent an email that said your track's been shut down.
Can we get a copy of that?
I sent it to you.
I haven't seen it.
It was in the email that you had with that CSX, everyone was copied on it. But the, the short answer, the short synopsis is our local track engineer retired, and his replacement came in. And it is his decision, and this is the stance that he has made. I will tell you that when I talked to him, there was a recent train derailment. And I will tell you that when I talked to WJSAP Monday, there was another train derailment last week. And so they are seeing the consequences of the fact that their standards were revised in '14, but they were slow to react in areas like ours. I was told that we can be rest assured, it is just our geographic region's turn. They were, they started in South Florida, and they are moving through the state. And since that came out, this, this is just where they are in the state of Florida.
Okay. I'm looking at the email, I don't see that, so if you could-
I'll resend it to you.
Yeah, I've got the same thing I have here, but not anything-
That's how we got the notice. In the body of the email, it says your track's been shut down.
Okay. Logistically speaking, it's not the taxpayers' business how you get your steel. I just want to put that out there. This rail spur only benefits one company. It doesn't benefit any, any other business in Putnam County except Veritas. There was discussion at the last meeting about us giving you back the rail spur, letting you guys come up with your own form of transportation, whether it be rail, barge, whatever. I just want to make that perfectly clear that, you know, I'm here looking for a solution, but if it's unilateral, I am not, I am not for helping one business with a half a million dollar shot in the arm when there's other businesses that check in 120 employees or more that don't get that same, same opportunity. So when I'd sat down and spoke with you guys before, I made it very clear that there needed to be some cooperation between Putnam County and Veritas, in my opinion, to make this equitable, because there has to be something on both sides of the fence. You bring in steel, you make steel, components for bridges, you ship them out of county, you make money. Yes, you employ 120 people, but this is a half a million dollars. What I would propose is that if we pay 100% of this today, that we put some sort of lease agreement together that you guys agree to that would allow you all to pay us $4,000 a month on a 10-year basis. So then that would, that would cover the costs of the rail spur being put in now, and then also some maintenance going forward. And then every 10 years, we can revisit that, see where we're at. I think that would be one equitable solution. The other solution might be to do a 50-50 split, where you guys provide the materials and/or, and some of the funding equal to 50%. And then we could agree on some sort of terms, like one or $2,000 a month lease agreement on a 10-year basis.
Okay, you done?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Okay, okay. First of all, I have to disagree. When we repaved the road, I don't see this as anything different than a road. When we repaved the road in front of Georgia Pacific three or four years ago, we didn't ask Georgia Pacific to pay half. We repaved the road. I was one of the ones that came up with, well, what if we just gave the rail spur to Veritas and let them go fix the thing? The problem with that is, is there's other people along that track that in the future could still use that track, including us, if we swing it into the property that we're looking at on the corner. So I don't think that the county should give up the operational control of that rail spur to anyone. And again, you know, the, we didn't ask other businesses for, when we pay, repave roads or pave roads in front of their businesses, we didn't ask them to come in and pay additional money to do that. So I don't think we should give it away, even though I talked about that as a possibility the other day, since I've done the research in the different parcels of land that touch that and the possibilities in the future. I don't think the county should give up that asset. And with it being our asset, I see it no different than a road. We should, if this was a road and the road was unusable, the county would be in there with all forces trying to get that road back open again, with all forces. And so I think that we should move forward today. I think that, I'm glad that we put it off until Tuesday, like we did, because it gave us the chance to decide who paid how much. How much Veritas' cut of this was, $75,000 to fix their stuff, we fix our stuff. And then we let them use the rail spur, just like we would anybody else up and down that track. So I'm with Commissioner Harvey, I'm ready to move this forward this morning. I'm ready to move it forward with the, under the terms that, and everybody's been amenable here that I've seen so far. So I, I would be absolutely surprised if Veritas could buy steel as cheap as WJSAP does. That's like saying one roofer can buy shingles cheaper than another roofer can. It's just not usually the case. So I'll bet you, I'll bet you the SAP Company buys steel probably as many tons as Veritas does. So the quantity discount is probably not going to be there, you know, for one over the other. So I am ready to move this forward, Mr. Chairman. Whenever you're ready, I'm ready for a motion.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Adams.
Well, I guess if, this is kind of why I wanted them to come up and talk, because before we have a motion, I'd like to hear from them what their willingness is to participate in this. I think that would be due diligence on our part.
Okay.
The difference between a rail spur and a road, is the road is accessible to every citizen. I've driven down the road in front of GP because it cuts across to a different road. I mean, it's convenient also, not just to GP, but to everyone. I've never seen anyone driving down, you know, run their rail car down the railroad as an individual citizen. So there is a big difference between a road and a rail spur. That's neither here nor there, because it's not what's stopping me from, from going forward with this. I'd just like to hear from them if that's amenable.
Commissioner Rawls, you okay if I ask Veritas to come up?
Absolutely.
Okay, Sam? We had a good meeting yesterday with them. They did verify that they had over 100 employees there, and then actually that they would look into possibly getting us the steel cheaper. So Sam, you if you want to just-
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners, appreciate the time and the opportunity to speak on behalf of Veritas. My name's Sam Hopper, I'm the plant controller down there. We did meet yesterday with Ms. Julianne, Mr. Pickens, and Mr. Suggs regarding this project and what's going on. Huge, Mr. Rawls, we were extremely surprised to find out we were getting padlocked. That track's inspected on a monthly basis, and we get a report. And nothing led us to believe that either side of the track was in jeopardy of being locked out. As I mentioned, we do move about 80 tons of rail car in the next four months. We have about 24 rail cars that are coming down for a State of Illinois project that we're going to be building. So, you know, this is in our best interest to work with the county. We did reach out to our steel suppliers to check on pricing for the rail. I know that SAP does buy a lot. We're hoping that with just our national presence, that we're able to find. I know last time we had looked at some rail, we did find it a little cheaper. And we're hoping that, again, with our context, we can provide not only our side of the contract, but as well yours with cheaper steel on that. We did also have a discussion yesterday. Our CFO, Alan Sobel, was on the call, as we discussed with everybody. And we are looking at what else we can contribute financially, as well as supplies-wise, to help lower the costs for everybody. We do understand that this is a, right now, currently a single-use rail spur. I know I'm working with the Chamber of Commerce and with a lot of you as well on the barge port quotes that we're doing with the Army Corps of Engineer, with the hope that we can kind of divert that rail spur as well, that it has two branches, one coming into Veritas, and then one going straight out to the barge port to continue to help Putnam grow. That is where we're at. We're, like I said, we are working with our team to try and figure out what other cost savings, as well as what financing we can assist with in providing to help keep this going.
Okay. When do you think you'll have that answer?
I'm hoping by the end of the week to be able to firm up. I know we've committed to the quote that SAP has provided for our side as right now. We're hoping by Friday to have the rail costs. And then once we've been able to secure that, we'll also provide additional information on what other funds we're going to be able to make available at this time. And we will also take, Mr. Rawls, your suggestions as well back to our team.
Okay, all right, thank you, Sam. Commissioner Rawls?
Paul, how are you doing?
Excuse me, how are you doing, Paul?
I'm sure.
Okay.
Would it be too much for you guys to swing $275,000, including your portion, in total? You already committed $75,000, that's yours anyways, you, that's yours, so it could-
Chairman, I don't think Mr. Rawls has the authority to negotiate on the part of this commission.
I'm not, I'm not negotiating, I'm asking a question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't know if that's appropriate.
Unfortunately, Mr. Rawls, I wish I could give you an answer. I'm also in the process of actually transitioning out of Veritas, so I do need to tread lightly as well as I don't want to make a commitment that I am not going to be around to keep. Again, I will reach out to our CFO and the executive team when we get back to the office today and discuss with them and say, here are a couple of the ideas, some of the questions, concerns that you've expressed, and we can see what we can do on our part. Again, we do understand that right now it is currently a single-use spur. And we also recognize, you know, that if we were to switch to having to truck all of this down, the loads between April and December of this year alone would cost us about $4 million.
So you just answered my next question. This, this rail spur has a huge value to your company.
Sorry, it does.
There's no doubt about it. And I do like the fact that you guys are checking in 120 people a day, that's awesome. But like I said before, if you take a look at someone like St. John Shipbuilders, and they're not anywhere close to a rail spur, they bring theirs in the old-fashioned way. So I think this is just an opportunity for us to work together. Obviously, there's a benefit to you, there's a benefit to our public. But there needs to be some equity here. I just don't see us shelling out almost a half a million dollars to benefit one business. But if we could get to a 50-50 or do something where we recoup our money over the next 10 years, I would definitely be in favor of that.
Understood, I will definitely-
I, I don't know that, you know, today, I don't know that I'm going to have enough information to be able to make an informed decision today. Because what I'm hearing is that y'all, y'all don't know where you are financially. We know where you have to be in order to get this done, but we would have to commit 100% of public funds with no guarantee from the other side that there would be any way of paying back or participating whatsoever if we, if we move this through right now.
Understood.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, like I said, we are working to help lower the costs right now. I can't make any guarantees besides working on the steel. I need to get back with my executive committee. It was the first time we'd really had a chance yesterday to sit down with our CFO, and we're hoping to meet with the rest of them and have an answer, hopefully by Friday for you, on what other commitments we can make.
I would, you said by Friday?
Yes, sir.
Any chance we can reconvene Friday and make a final decision? Are we going to be forced to make a decision based on the limited information we have?
Or can we make a decision with the understanding that if they participate, we take that in consideration? Is that possible?
I don't know that that's going to work.
All right, Commissioner Turner?
Oh, yes, several comments, Mr. Chairman. First off, we need to ask SAP if he'll participate in somebody else furnishing his steel. I know that in my business- I know that in my business, if you offer to furnish the material, I decline the project, because the, the material counts will be wrong, the links will be wrong, whatever you order may not fit. When I order and it's wrong, it's on me. When you order and it's wrong, it's on you. So, I think the first step here before we offer whether WR Sap is, or WJ Sap is going to do this or not, we need to ask WJ Sap, because they may say, no, never mind, y'all just go find somebody else, and then we're really in a bad place. So, I think that's the first thing we need to do before we spend too much time trying to see, you know, if we can save a hundred dollars by, by buying the steel through a different route or doing whatever, where we could maybe, I, I doubt seriously that they would have a problem with us buying direct, you know, but they might, but I doubt it seriously. Most people don't. I do like the idea of us trying to formulate a lease agreement with, with them, but I don't like the idea of us holding them hostage in order to do it. I think that's not the way we should be doing business in Putnam County with one of our, with one of our businesses. So, this commissioner is still ready to move forward this morning with the deal as presented, with the exception of can we buy it direct or not? And if we could save some money by furnishing the steel from them, and WJ Sap doesn't have a problem with that, like I said, I think they're gonna, but if they don't, we can definitely look at that, but we need to get this going. We got twelve more days to have a plan in place, or they're going to shut this thing down again, and I don't think they're playing with us either. So, I think we need to do that. And another thing we need to take in account here, you know, it wasn't too long ago, we had a contractor come to us that we had hired to put in a liner at the landfill, and that liner at the landfill ended up costing four-hundred-thousand dollars more money, and it was thereabouts, more money than what it was supposed to, through no fault of his own, through no fault of his own. And we paid that money because it was the right thing to do. Gentlemen, this is the time for us to do another one of them things, because it's the right thing to do. This company has gone out and they bid work all over the country, and they bid it at the cost of materials that using the rail spur as part of it to save it. So, it's not like we're making them a lot more money. What we're doing is we're crushing their profits by doing this, because they bid this project under those circumstances. So, it's not like they didn't have every month, didn't have this rail spur looked at. They did. And it just, the new track manager says, I don't care what that person said, I'm the new track manager, you're going to do what I say now, and I say, fix this to these standards or your track's being shut down. There's no court fights, there's no, nothing we can do. We can either shut it down and harm this business, or we can move forward. This is the, to me, is the same situation as we faced on the liner deal. We, it's time to step forward and do the right thing, and this is the right thing for us to step up and fix this. I hope that, and I believe that Veritas Steel, with the little bit of, of exposure that I've had to them, they're wanting to do the right thing. They help in the community, they donate to charities. I see them on things all the time, that they're donated on some, that they've donated to some event or some, or what have you. They didn't have to do all that, but they do it, because they're trying to be a good member of the community. So, I think this is one of those times to do the right thing here, and step up and fix this deal, and then go present them and say, okay, Sam, would you take it back to your, to your executive team and tell them that the county would like to come up with some kind of a lease agreement to use that, that would at least cover maybe the maintenance over the years of the project or what have you, seeing how you are the biggest user at this point? But I don't think you always will be. I think somebody else along that track's going to use it too, which is why I don't want to give it up. So, again, whenever you're ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to give it.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, I was ready to give a motion, and that's what I'm prepared to do right now. And if you don't mind, I'd like to move this item forward with a motion.
Okay. Got a proper motion to move this forward as presented.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Turner. Open it up for discussion, as we'll start with Commissioner Adams' act.
Do, do we have, and I, I just had a few more questions, but have we done any incentive tax-wise, or any other incentive with Veritas, like we've done with some other companies in, in the county? So, I mean, looking at the numbers overall, right? It doesn't offend me to help out with four-hundred-thousand dollars. It's an average of a little less than four-thousand dollars per employee they have. I'm all for that type of thing. I do think we absolutely need to look into leasing this to them, and, and it's not, they go back and see if it's amenable to them. I think it's something we have to say, people, anyone who accesses this rail, whether it's them or the other people that are on it, as they access it, there's going to be a lease, and that, that, that needs to happen sooner than later. So, I, I think we should go ahead and fix it. I'm, I'm in agreement after listening to all the things. We don't have a current tax incentive with this employer, we do with other large employers in the county. And it's, it's not that much in the big scheme of things, given that the employer, do you know how many, well, I guess it doesn't matter, given that they employ a hundred-and-nineteen people, obviously, we don't know how many are from this county, and how many live in the outskirts or whatever, but that really isn't overly relevant, because theoretically, they spend money in the county besides that. I'm going to support it. I think we definitely need to get on a workshop agenda for our, well, I guess for, this would be Port Authority Workshop, coming up to discuss what the lease would be, and I don't want to throw a number at it, I, I think four thousand seems pretty low, to be honest. I get it, you were based on to recoup the costs of this, but I think it needs to be something, we find out what other people pay for certain, those type leases throughout the country or the state, and do a comparable analysis. Your savings are obviously huge by having this rail spur. I mean, basically, this would only be like ten percent of what that one project's cost would be. So, that, that's, that's good news for you guys.
Yeah. The biggest concern is that it would, having to truck in, that would actually turn that project on profit.
Oh, right, right, right. But future projects too, right? I mean, that's projects four million dollars, the next one would be the same, and how would you, that quote, you would be competitive, so I get that. We want to keep those hundred-and-nineteen jobs in Putnam County. I'm for this. Obviously, we need to push to get that, are we amenable to put that on a workshop, maybe in April?
Yes.
Can we get that on the workshop?
So, is, is that, are you?
Do a lease, yeah.
Are you amending the motion?
And not, not just lease to Veritas, lease for anyone that's going to connect to this spur along that route. Like you're saying, there's some other people that own property next to it, and those properties may change hands at some point. So, given that, that we're going to put that on a workshop, I'm willing to get behind this. Again, the cost is less than four thousand per employee, and incentives are much greater for some other areas in the county, so.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
So, is that, is that a condition to the motion? Are you amending the motion to include the, the future use of?
No, because we can't really have that, because we need to get this done, so.
Get this done.
Oh, I'm saying, are you, are you saying it's, it's contingent upon having an agreement in the future that, where they, they pay rent on the?
I, I would love to see that, I just don't think that'll pass today.
We're going to put it on a workshop, so at least we'll look at the options of that. So, I think the, the task at hand here is to, is to pass this or not pass it. The use of this rail spur, either the use of it makes them profitable, the lack of it makes them not profitable. And the bids they've got now and future bids, that's pretty much the bottom line here. I, I feel we treat this pretty much like a road, but I am amenable to, you know, to look at this as a lease option or other options in, in the future. So, all right, well, last comments, Paul, or, excuse me, Jeff, you're first, and then Paul.
All right. So, I think, I think it's going to be a requirement, this is, this is not emergency. You guys have known this since two thousand fourteen, the county's known it since two thousand fourteen. You guys bought the property with this problem. We've discussed this a couple of years ago. You know, I, somebody walking out one day and realizing that the gate is locked, that's not an emergency. It was just poor planning on everybody's parts, including, I think we all share part of the blame in this. So, I, I really think that we should all participate in the, the reconstruction. If, if the citizens pay for this, I think that's just a, should be a long-term loan to Veritas, that we can recoup our money in the future in their, in the way of a lease agreement. If somebody else comes along and, and ties onto it, obviously, that could be cut in half at that point, because then you have two people participating. I think that's a fair and equitable way to help keep your company profitable. You know, I, I would hate to look at the numbers you guys look at on a daily basis, but I can tell you that I check at about thirty people a day right now in my company, and we're still hiring. And, you know, I, I don't get anything from the government or from the taxpayers to support my business, so as a business owner speaking right now, I think it's, it's, there's got to be an equitable solution. I think, um, Veritas at some point, you know, honestly, y'all should have stepped up a couple of years ago and said, hey, here's what we're willing to do, we got to get this problem solved, but we just kept putting it off and kept putting off and kept putting off. So, I'll vote along with this, as long as we, as long as we're moving towards getting a lease agreement. That's the only way that, that I would support this. So, am I hearing that that's what we're moving towards?
We're going, we're going to have a workshop to explore the possibilities of lease agreements. That's the way I understand it. Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
Correct. What I understood.
Okay.
Why, why could we not put that as part of the motion to require a lease agreement and let, then have a conversation with Veritas and lay that out? I mean, I, not trying to get in your head or anything, but I couldn't imagine four or five thousand dollars a month is going to break you guys one or another, but it sounds like if you didn't have this rail spur, the, the end result would be having to go to semis, and that would not work.
And we're, and we're not, I'm not, we're not going to hold them hostage, not while I'm chairman, so.
It's not a matter of holding them hostage.
I appreciate your comments. We're going to move on to...
I think we should have gotten to this point way before this conversation.
I think you're one hundred percent correct.
I'm held hostage. I feel like I'm held hostage now. I have to make a decision, you know, because we, we took so long to do this. So, it's not a matter of hostage holding on their part.
I was speaking to going ahead and negotiate a lease with them from the DIES. I don't agree with that.
I don't, I don't know why we can't have a meeting on Friday.
I think we should have a workshop in the future to discuss that. Commissioner Adams, aight?
Yeah. So, I think the plan part, this is the plan, so, I mean, we have that kind of. So, as far as that goes, waiting till Friday isn't the end of the world, but again, the only question I had was for staff, where are we talking about bringing this money from? We, we talked about, in the Development Authority, the...
Yes, sir. It would come from the Port Authority.
So, it'd all come from the Port Authority, and what would that leave us in the Port Authority?
Um, you had roughly a million, so roughly six hundred in general reserves, but you're also bringing in another roughly six hundred plus when the sale of the property at the Business Park is finalized.
And then where were we taking the, the property we were, we're trying to buy? Where is that coming out of?
We haven't made that decision.
You haven't made that decision.
Okay. And that's, that's, so, we potentially, if we use the Port Authority to buy Port Authority property, we'll be left with around two hundred K after we buy this, after we pay for this, sell the other property, buy the other property. Again, we, we need to, this is separate from this, but we need to really look into the Port Authority, and I think that's coming up in the future meetings.
It is.
So.
All right. Last comments, Commissioner Turner, then.
I just called for question with my comments.
Okay. We got a proper motion, proper second on the floor to prove the proposal to repair the tracks as presented. All in favor, and I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose, same sign.
Aye.
All right. Okay. Four to one with Commissioner Rawls assenting. Okay. Sam, thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it.
Okay. I'll open it up for public comment on Port Authority items, and individuals wishing to make public comment on Port Authority items. Okay, seeing none, I'll close that portion. Any further general discussion, gentlemen? Okay, seeing none, I'll adjourn, I'll re, I'll adjourn the Port Authority, reconvene the special call board meeting, and I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody wishing to make public comment today? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, and we'll move down to our second item. I wanted to have another ARPA discussion, and Julianne has presented on the front page of our, with our agenda, is what our allocations were, and then the particular meetings that we designated money and what they were for and the dollar amounts. So, we have a remaining balance of one million, seven eighty-one, five thirty-five left as far as what we can spend, as long as it meets the ARPA requirement. So, as we did before, and I'm going to just, Commissioner Harvey has asked us to speak first, so he is running, so I'll start with him. We'll just have discussions of if we want to disperse any more of this money today. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, a few months back, I came up with a plan, presented it to the board, and we've been able to whittle down. Didn't get everything I wanted in the beginning, and, but that's okay. We're, we're a group of educated men who sit down and negotiate and try to move the county forward. Out of the one-point-seven million, I would like to, to make a proposition today that we use one-point-five million in our parks and get that done. I believe that'll free up money in our general fund for next year to work in other parks throughout the county that need to be done, even though we have a few census blocks that this money needs to go to. I think if we can devote one-point-five million today, we can go ahead and take care of the park. I'd also like for us to commit to resurfacing Barden Ranchette Road. We talked about that road back when...
Which one?
Barden Ranchette. We made a commitment to resurface that double-chip seal road, but we couldn't get the, the trucks over the Barden Bridge to make that happen. And we made a promise to the people out there that as soon as we could, that we'd be back out there. And truly, the road is falling apart. I've talked to Mr. Troxell, who was out there yesterday looking at that road, and I think that's, that's an eligible expense here, using our ARPA funds, and it is a promise that this board made to do as soon as we could possibly get across that bridge. So, Mr. Chairman, that would take care of one-point-six-some-odd-million dollars of the request, and that's, that's where I'm at to start the discussion today.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Turner, I think you were second.
Okay. Did we check to see if that road was a candidate for an, another chip seal with microsurface, or, or would we have to do a full-blown paving? What, what, what would your, be your suggestion on that, Mr. Troxell? I know that part of our reason for putting money aside, an extra million dollars this year, was to try and catch some of these chip seal roads that were going away, and maybe we could re-microsurface them and make them last another eight or ten years, because they're eight or ten years old, by, by going in and doing the repairs and the additional microsurfacing. I'm wondering if, is that an option we're even looking at, or are we just looking at doing away with the chip, double-chip seal microsurface and go straight to paving?
Excuse me. Uh, thank you. I'm not a, I'm not a huge fan of microsurfacing or double-chip seal. I just think it just...
They're not as good, but they're cheaper, you know?
They're, they're not that mu, they're not that much cheaper. They, overall, they're not that much cheaper for the, for the, for the years of, of pavement that you get. I, if, if we do it, I would prefer to, to asphalt it.
Do we have, Commissioner Harvey, do we have a, a cost breakdown of, of a ballpark of what this is going to run? What was that amount for that road?
It's about, you did a takeoff and sent me an email. It's around a hundred-and-fifty thousand, maybe less. According to Bib, we do have a lot of work going on in the county right now. I think it's an absolutely fabulous time, Commissioner Turner, that maybe when we put that maybe when we put this out to bid, if we can do it now, we might see that somebody could, who's doing the roads or might not could go out there and save us some money immediately.
Well, I'm good with that. I'm just wanting to make sure. And then the last one, I guess, would be, my last question, I guess, would be for Sam Sullivan. Sam, do you, is this an eligible project in your opinion at this point to turn this? Because I do remember us telling them that we would do that this year, but we couldn't because the bridge was out. So it got taken off the list.
With the flexibility option that the federal government provide in the final rule, yes, it is eligible.
Okay, have we burned up our flex options so far? Do we still have a hundred and fifty left in it?
You technically, even though we don't have this amount, we have two point nine million available in flexibility.
Okay.
You're well covered.
Okay, so we think it is eligible under flexible funds, probably?
We are confident it is.
Okay. Well, I have no, so where, where would that, where would yours put as commissioner? I mean, how much would we have left?
One point six five million dollars.
So we'd only have a hundred and.
One sixty left.
One sixty left?
Under sixty thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm good for now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Adams, Zach?
Yeah, I guess I had a couple of questions. I guess I didn't realize we were getting here yet. Have we found in the, the purchasing process for the ambulance and the quick response squads, are we finding that that may end up being a little less cost effective than if we went to our traditional bidding through the state contract and things like that? I've heard that from other areas, that when they, purchases like this are, are basically costing ten to twenty some percent more because of the federal requirements to the way we purchase. I just wanna see if we're seeing that same thing that I'm hearing from other counties. A couple of counties have backed out of those type purchases and reshifted it like to a road and things like that and then took the money they were gonna do the road and, and put it towards the ambulances or whatever that purchase product is. Are we seeing that here?
So typically, I wanna correctly answer your question. The quick response cars will be purchased differently than the ambulances will be. The federal guidelines for procurement require that you overlay federal guidelines with current guidelines. And then based on the threshold of the purchase, you apply the most stringent of the two. So, follow me so far? The feds don't have a prescribed process for a purchase of anything less than two hundred and fifty thousand. So those quick response units will be all individually under two hundred and fifty thousand, which means we will apply our local and state procurement to that, which would allow us to go up of a contract, state DMS, however you wanna do it. Those ambulances, for instance, cause these are the two examples you brought up, they're a six hundred thousand dollar buy with the ambulance and, and what we're buying. And so that will fall into federal procurement and we'll go through the process to do it. However, the manufacturers of ambulances typically work with enough federal sourced contracts that I don't see, it's gonna take more time, but I cannot give you an answer as to today as to whether or not I think it's gonna be significantly more expensive to move forward in a federal arena. If you're dealing with contractors who are not normal or, or used to sourcing federal products and now they have to worry about compliance with all of those federal clauses, yes, it could cost you substantially more. But typically, in what we've done to date, I don't believe you're gonna see a great deal of additional costs laid on just because it's a federal sourced project.
Okay, as long as you're confident of that. So if, if you do see that, though, you'll come, you'll bring that to us?
Absolutely, we'd bring that to you.
That's all I have right now. I, I'm not for doing any of this for parks. I don't know if this is like my turn or overall or how are we doing this? Cause the agenda headed a certain way, so.
Okay.
I guess if this is my turn, my proposal would go towards if we're, we're not willing to do not for profits, which I haven't felt like we had the tenor that we have three that are willing to do that. So again, I, I would like to propose that we find a way to get money into the hands of some of our employees through either the incentive bonus or through identifying employees that are critical and using the, the pay increase that's available in ARPA. Would require some more conversation with Sam exactly how we would go about that, but I would prefer to see that happen where we can help our people where, again, where the rubber meets the road is our people, whether you're talking about our citizens or our employees. And without them, any equipment we buy, any ambulances, any tractors, anything we do doesn't happen. And we're already seeing that in some levels where we are shorthanded and some stuff's not happening. So, thank you.
Commissioner Rawls?
Mike. What's gonna be done with the, with the drainage issues?
With throughout the county?
No.
Oh yeah, I don't know.
On Ran, Bard and Blanchett. Bard and Blanchett Road.
Okay. I don't, I don't, I don't know about the drainage issue. I personally do not know about the drainage issues out there, but I can look into that.
When you and I were out there, this is about a year and a half ago, you had brought the ditch crew up from south end of the county. There was that one culvert that had filled up and had to be blasted out. But at the time, you were talking about, we needed to make adjustments to the ditches and the culverts out there.
I'd have to, I'd have to look at that again. That was probably just.
Would that be part of the.
First started, so.
The, the paving costs or?
That, well, we could add it to the paving costs, but I don't know if that's, I don't think that piece would be ARPA eligible. I think just the paving is. I'm not sure.
All right, and when we made the commitment prior to the bridge closure or after the bridge closure, I guess actually, where were the funds gonna come from at that point?
I believe it would have been either from the normal dirt to pave or, or pot, but again, that was done before I got here as well, so I'm not sure where that money was gonna come from, but I would have just assumed it would come from the dirt to pave or, or the resurf, I'm sure, resurfacing budget.
Is, is the money still available now that was there then or?
No, no. We use, we use up all the dollars every year for the, for those two programs.
All right. I'm just wondering if we'd set the money aside, you know, if we made the commitment, if it was earmarked. You know, Mr. Adams, Adams Zach brought up the fact that, you know, the, the board doesn't have an appetite to do any funding for the nonprofits. We have an opportunity once again. I was told by a citizen that somebody brought up the fact that the, the reason nonprofits weren't getting funded was because the commission, one of the commissioners didn't feel like they had the votes in the commission. I mean, I, I've stood firm since the beginning that I think we should be supporting those agencies that are out there doing the work that we're required to provide for the citizens anyway. So I really think we need to take a look at it. We got one point seven five million. We have money in our budget for parks and recreation. We cut our tax, our taxes two years in a row, you know, to the, to the citizens. So I don't know why we wouldn't take a look at putting some of this money out there now. We've got at least two votes saying yes right now for anybody that may be looking for two votes.
Okay, do you have a breakdown on how you'd like to?
I honestly thought we were gonna come in here and talk about splitting the money up three ways or five ways where everybody gets three hundred thousand dollars like we talked about, but I, I guess that's off the table. But I would, I'd like to take a look at the list of, of what was provided before and sit down and go through that list if, if we could do that and put the rest of the one point seven million out to them.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Adams, Zach?
Yeah, so if we're going down the path of roads and that, I mean, I'm trying to, to, to participate with the rest of the commission as best as I can. I think, you know, I've met with our Public Works Director, I've met with our sa, safety with JR as well as come out to West Putnam. We really need to consider, Lake Susan, I have it in our dirt to pave. It's gonna take five and a half years in little tiny pieces to get that done. And that basically is really not paving next to nothing else in, in District Five. Lake Susan is, is a high risk area. It's a high risk main corridor that goes out to that area. JR cannot get people out there if it rains from the Interlochen, from Mary Wisham. Station twenty, it's twenty and five minutes about if you're sitting there in the station on a running truck to drive out and go around, especially if there's a rain event and you have Old Hawthorne Road also washed out, which happens every time it rains. I mean, basically, I mean, I was out there the one day and there was two big box trucks stuck in the middle of Lake Susan Road. The guys that were paving actually were the ones that went and pulled them out and brought them to the pavement and got them out of there. And the problem there is you come across the crest of that hill, there's someone stuck there. If you're coming from the west, coming east, you can't turn around. There's, there's no way around it. So the people literally pile up there, not like hit each other, but once one person's stuck in the middle of that road, they end up there and there's nothing Public Works can do during a rain event to accommodate that. It's, you know, you can't respond as fast as someone gets stuck. So I'd like to see if we're, if we're going down the path of roads, that we include basically completing Lake Susan Road, which I don't know how much, I think it's three point one miles. I'd rather see us do that and Bard and Blanchett Road. In my opinion, with the one point seven million, I think that'd be about basically, what are you saying, the cost now around five hundred? So that would eat up all of it, really, if we did Lake Susan and the Bard and Blanchett Road.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
I think the difference on this particular road is not in my district, but it doesn't have anything to do with it. I think the difference is we made a promise to these people that we would do this one and then we couldn't because the bridge was out. So every single one of us in our district has multiple roads that need paving, just like yours, Commissioner. Multiple roads and they're just as bad. They wash out every time it rains. There's, they, they need it and we're trying to get to them as quickly as we can. As far as the parks, as far as the parks and rec goes, I, I do believe that we need to put some of that money in, in here because that's gonna be a direct impact on tax dollars. Our major, most center park in this county is Triangle or Theobald Park. Everybody goes there. Everybody comes from that or from South Putnam, West Putnam, everybody comes there. That's where their most programs are for the county, that the county puts on, including soccer and what have you. And so I think that that's still, we need to make sure that that's still available to do the things with it, the recreation for the county. So if we don't do this because the lights are so bad out there right now, they've been putting them together with Band-Aids and bubble gum for several years now. And so it's just, I think it's gotten to the point where we're sooner or later gonna have to do it. I just assume it not become an emergency situation where we can't go through the proper motions and do things like it ought to be done instead of, okay, we got to have it done by Thursday next week because in the Thursday of next week, we got somebody coming in here gonna have a deal going on. So now it becomes something that costs an extra hundred thousand dollars because we didn't do it. This is our opportunity to do this. So Commissioner Harvey, I'll, I'll back what you just said a minute ago if, if, when you're ready to make a motion.
Commissioner Adams, Zach?
To be clear, the reason why people flock to that park is because the government is basically subsidizing parks and recs for the people that participate there. The local groups like MISA and West Putnam, who has failed now, can't compete with the county having rates of forty some dollars. So the parents have no choice because our programs are getting shut down in South and West Putnam because commissioners haven't stood up for those organizations, whether it's South or West Putnam. It's something I've been trying to do and trying to talk about. So basically, you have a group that, to play soccer in central, in the central Theobald Park is around forty some dollars. To play soccer in any other location is around eighty to a hundred twenty dollars because you have to pay for the uniforms and everything else. The county supplies that stuff in the program at the county. So parents are forced to go there or go to Keystone Heights or to go air, other areas. That, that's why they flock there, because they have no other alternative. So, just to be clear on that.
We've got quite a few programs in, in South Putnam. They're working quite well with the fees, you know, whatever they are. Commissioner Rawls?
How do we get the money from the BOCC to the Port Authority to pay for the improvements at the park?
What was the question?
We're making, are we making capital improvements? We're changing out the lights? So would that not come out of Port Authority?
It can be paid for by the general fund or by the ARPA fund, I guess is really clearly the statement. ARPA's an entirely different fund to be literally.
To Commissioner Turner's point, I agree. We're we're not discussing on an annual basis, semi-annual basis, quarterly basis, monthly basis, what it takes to move our citizens ahead. We, we do react to a lot of emergencies, you know, and I'm, I'm sitting here wondering to myself, what would we be talking about if we hadn't had COVID hit? Where, where the money come from? We, we need to have that painful conversation eventually to discuss how we're gonna move the county forward. If we're hoping that people move in here and build houses and the value of houses stay up and we don't have anything, then, you know, I don't know that hope is anything you can hang your hat on. I, you know, appreciate the fact that we got this money from the federal government. We didn't ask for it. It's gonna cost all, us and our children and our grandkids going forward for quite a while, but, you know, we, we're, we're having a conversation about funding a road that we committed to paving a year and a half, two years ago at a money that was available that should have been earmarked, but we needed to spend that money somewhere else. And now we're having a conversation about making improvements to the, to the park. Which need, or, or, the, the needs are huge. I, I actually had an electrician go there and give me a price just to see what the cost of lighting would be out there. But I, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm venting a little bit, I guess, because I'm frustrated with the way we do business as, as a board. I think that we could do better by the citizens by not waiting until we have an opportunity like this. Because God knows that if we had not had the ARPA money, we wouldn't be having this conversation about that improvement. And I, I do agree with Commissioner Adams, Zach, with regards to what families have to pay for. I don't know that it's the government competing against the private sector in that regard. I, you know, I've said it since I got elected. I think that if we turn the parks over to citizens groups to manage, then they, they would do what they do and we would be out of that business and we wouldn't have to worry about supporting one group and not another. But that's just my two cents worth.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do wanna wrap this up. I do believe that, you know, we can put money into the parks, one point five million. We can see an increase. We can relieve our, our park budget for next year to go out to the outlined parks and maybe we can get things going better in that, that direction for that. I do believe West Putnam has had very viable projects before in parks and will again in the future as, as this moves, as our county continues to grow. And I do appreciate Commissioner Turner, your remarks. We did make a promise and that promise needs to be kept. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We put one point five million in parks and a hundred and fifty million, up to a hundred and fifty million in Bard and Blanchett. Hundred and fifty thousand up to, I'm sorry, that'd be a heck of a road. I'm sorry. Hundred and fifty thousand to Bard and Blanchett Road. That's my motion, sir.
I'll second that.
We've got a proper motion and then a proper second. I'm gonna open it up for discussion. Commissioner Adams, Zach?
What specifically are we doing in the parks?
Julianne brought us a. She brought us a list of those items?
The narrative that was written on the original staff request for South Putnam includes upgrades to the LED lightings, upgrades to new driveways and parking area to make the, the space safer for entrance and exits. The new scoreboards that are needed and roughly ten thousand to remodel the restroom and concession stand in South Putnam. At the John Theobald Sports Complex, it would upgrade the LED light conversion. Again, driveway paving and parking for safety, new scoreboards, field drainage and additional concession and restroom remodel there as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That actually comes up the one point, is it one point five even?
About two.
It's one point five two?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the motion was one point five.
I can't amend your motion.
I'll amend my motion to one point five two.
Okay, and to say that.
For that and one up to a hundred and fifty thousand for Bard and Blanchett Road.
Okay. All right, so we've got amendment on the motion, amendment on the second. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, indicate saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Same sign? Okay. Motion passes five, three to two, so.
So that gives us, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that gives us a hundred and forty?
No, two things were amended there. You're down to a hundred and eleven.
Hundred and eleven?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What would hurt to hold that hundred and eleven for a little while until we see if some of this other pricing is coming in at budgeted items and see, have that hundred and eleven in reserves? I'd like to, I've asked Mr. Troxel to, and he's started identifying people that live along the trunk line for the existing water lines right now and to get the program started where some, and maybe send out a letter that says you can hook on as long, during this time period, you can hook on to our water, which is exactly what we wanted to do. And then, and try to get that program moving. And he, he, they said, he said they've already started identifying those, those people that would, you would send the letters to, those citizens you would send the letters to, to try to get them hooked up. So it could be that we think it's gonna be three hundred thousand, it could be six hundred thousand if everybody decided to hook up at one time. I don't think, look for that to happen by any means, but it could. And so and then again, when we look at this Ranchette Road right here, I think the a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we had booked for it was in a year and a half or two year old budget. So I'm not so sure they can get it done for that right now. But that would give us just a little bit of money in there for leeway, you know, what have you. It could be that the LED lights for the parks, I think they were, I think the, the, the numbers on them were a year or two. It could be that the LED lights for the parks, I think they were, I think the numbers on them were a year or two old. I don't know about everybody else's business, but if you're over 60 days old in my business, those numbers are worthless as the paper they're written on with the price increases that have been happening lately. So, Mr. Chairman, I think we should leave that other 111,000 in reserves at this point until we see what's going on with some of all this other stuff we got going on.
Okay, I'm in agreement, will we need a motion on that or just a?
Just leave it.
Okay, all right, okay. We'll move down to any other commissioner comments, Commissioner Adamsak?
No.
Commissioner Rawls?
And we agreed to start discussing budget in January, we really haven't had a discussion yet. We got an update on it, I think we need to start taking a look at, getting our budget talks going. We've got a lot of issues that are facing us. Doesn't look like we're gonna have any more ARPA money to deal with. So I think Commissioner Adamsak brought up a very valid point, I've been saying it for several months. We've got a lot of compression of our wage scale that's happened, that's gonna continue to happen. I know Commissioner Piggin, you and I have talked about employees and what the costs are and associated costs nowadays. I think we really do need, we owe it to our employees to start having this conversation. I've talked to department heads, I've talked to employees, no one really seems to have a sense of direction. You know, I'm sure that staff is, you know, noodling through, but if, you know, if we all put our heads together, I think we'd do much better than if we just have staff out there with no direction. I think we really owe it to them to start getting some sense of direction where we're heading over the next three or four years to be able to take on this issue.
Okay.
That's all I got, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I think you need to let Administrator answer that, he's wanting to, I can see it in his eyes.
It's not about management, I'm just saying, I think we need to give him direction.
Okay, Administrator Suggs?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. And, you know, I can appreciate the conversation from the diets this morning, but until someone comes and has a conversation with the county administrator, you know, there's no way for me to respond other than to say that, you know, we are working on this, we're holding weekly meetings and we have been now for a while to discuss everything and we can come up with a way to maintain and retain staff and attract new staff and get to the $15 per hour pay scale, which federal government tells us we have to be at in the next four years. We're looking at all those options and have been for a while. So, again, as I always do at this point in time of the year, when we talk, start talking budget, it would be so much easier if we could have some sit-down conversations in the office to discuss these matters. But I have yet to have an opportunity for a commissioner to come meet with me from an invitation. But Commissioner Rawls, I'd certainly invite you to come and sit with us.
The problem is, is anything you and I talk about is just that. We're the decision-makers, it's gonna be more beneficial for the five of us to get together and have the conversation. If I talk to you about something, and I'll give you an example, we've talked in the past and you say, well, I agree with you, but the commission doesn't feel that way, the conversation ends there. The conversation starts here with the four people to my right. You and I cannot have a meaningful conversation unless the commission says this is the direction that we're heading. Otherwise, you and I would just be spitballing and it would be futile.
So what's the difference in talking to the county administrator and talking to department heads?
I'm talking to, I'm getting, because I'm getting a feel. So when I discussed the other day about the salaries, I'm getting a feel for where our staff is. I don't want a feel-good answer from anybody, I want to know how the staff feels. So one of my first questions that I ask the staff that I've never talked to is, give me the best thing and the worst thing about working for Putnam County. That's me doing my job as a commissioner. Engaging staff is one thing, making decisions is a completely other conversation. And we have to get to a point where the board gives staff a direction that we want you to head in. If you say, well, I think we should head in this direction, and then you give it back to us and we go, no, 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 turn in this direction, we've wasted all that valuable time. So all I'm saying is, I think it would be prudent for us as a board to start having the conversations, looking at all the options, working through it. We have a lot of Mondays through Sundays ahead of us that we have available. I'm willing to commit whatever day I have to. I just think we really need to start talking about this from a budgeting standpoint. It's, we could ramp it up slowly, but I've heard all sorts of suggestions. If it's a 3% for the next five years, that's not gonna get it done. If we go 5% for the next five years, I still don't think we get it done. I think that if we have anybody making 18, 19, 20 dollars an hour right now, if they're not making north of 22, 23 four years from now, we're gonna either lose them or we're gonna put them in poverty. So it's a difficult conversation, we just at some point need to sit down and have it.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Rawls, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to bring to your attention, last Monday, I took a trip to Tallahassee. There was a few things, a really bad broadband bill that was going through. Worked on getting the money gutted out of the bill, which needed to. They were trying to pass a bill with, out of any funds even being allocated for it, which was gonna benefit one company. And so I drove up to see my friends up there and tried to work that deal and we made that happen. But in the meantime, I was talking, I was in Representative Payne's office, and I mentioned the Kelly Smith School traffic situation that's going out on 20, and it's getting to be very scary, frankly. Mr. Troxel and I have talked about that. And Representative Payne asked if I could come back and look at a local level solution. And I think Mr. Troxel and I've sent an email to Dr. Serency to see if they could get together and try to get that worked out. I know Mr. Troxel had said that he had reached out to DOT, but extending that school lane just is not the answer on 20. So probably using interior roads, maybe in the county, would be an option. But I'm gonna let Mr. Troxel and Dr. Serency work that out. I was also up there meeting with our lobbyists about our funding for the Barden Bridge and County Road 310 Bridge. If you recall, when we were up there for rural days, Julianne jumped on the laptop computer and went to work on trying to get that, those things funded. Barden Bridge is still going to hit our general reserves and 310 Bridge doesn't appear that we have enough money allocated for that from moving that money from Holloway Road to those two bridges. So that was one of my goals up there, it looks like that's still going through the process. And we'll just have to see next week when the budget legislative ends next Friday at 11, the 11th, and we'll see where we're at there and then what the governor does with those two requests. But I just wanted to bring those to your attention and attention of this board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey, Commissioner Turner?
Yes, sir, the only comment I have today is, is we did have a budget workshop in January and it was a workshop that Mr. Rawls decided not to come to. So, but we have started that, that was a request from the board to have one in January and we had it with a documented presentation that was presented to us. So we have started that process and just saying that we have it doesn't make that statement accurate. So that's all I have today, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right, thank you. Clerk of Court, Matt Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing this morning.
County Administrator, any other comments?
No, sir, I have no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. Yes, come forward, Ed. If you would, give your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name's Ed Kilabru. I live at 142, 146, excuse me, Barden Road, Alaca, Florida. I mean, I know you made your decisions and you've gone through. And what I'm about to say, I'm not, I do not want nobody to take nothing personal. Like I've told several of y'all, it's all politics, I understand that. I'm a grown man, I feel like crying right now. Y'all took the 1.6 million dollars and put it into parks. And I understand parks are very important. I have four grandchildren that appreciate the parks of Putnam County. I have two children that have appreciated the parks along the way. But with that being said, you know, we were, at the beginning of this ARPA fund money, we were talking about maybe putting 10% back for the nonprofits. Every Friday, I choose, I choose, nobody makes me, I choose. And I'm not trying, I'm not, I don't want any, I don't want any slaps on the back, I don't want nobody telling me thank you, but I choose to go out and help the people of Putnam County. Yesterday, I brought in 500 pounds of meat from St. Johns County to Putnam County and distributed it to different organizations here. Not the organization I'm talking about, but the different organizations so they could feed the people that they're lacking to feed. Lee Conley House was one of them, Bread of Life was the other. I took 15, 20-pound boxes of wings to the sheriff's office to help alleviate their budget issues. So for y'all to take that money, and some of y'all have said, well, the taxpayers don't, you know, they, my taxpayers don't want to see that tax money go to there. And put it into parks, which will help, I agree. But right now, because of current situations across the globe, because of current situations in our nation's capital, we have people starving. Do you hear me? They're starving, I'm being serious. And I'm not trying, I'm not trying to put y'all down, believe me, I'm not, I'm just making.
You're getting pretty close.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I don't mean to.
I'm gonna let you go a little bit longer.
Okay, I don't mean to, I'm not, I'm just trying to state my opinion, Mr. Chairman. I'm serious, I just, I am. These people, you know, they're trying to choose whether or not to pay a car payment, a house payment, pay their gas bill or eat. So, again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to offend y'all, I'm just stating my opinion. You know, you guys got a tough job, I know that. You know, I know that, be on a shot of a doubt. But I just think that the park thing could have been kicked on down the road a little bit. Maybe till the current administration and the government in Washington could have been, you know, maybe change. Maybe things will change. And I understand that some of the people that were coming up here and asking for money were asking for a monthly, something that'll go away in a month or maybe a couple of months, were paying a bill for a couple of months. I understand that. But, you know, some of us were asking something for something that'll make a difference in Putnam County's future. I've had some people tell me, and this ain't, this is nothing to y'all. Some people have told me, well, you're just opening it up to more homeless people. And that's not, that's not what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to help Putnam County, I'm trying to help the people that are here in Putnam County. And these people might not pay a property tax, but they do pay sales taxes in our county. I mean, they still have to buy gas, they still have to, so they are taxpayers. So, again, I apologize if I've stepped on your toes, because I don't mean to. Because the way that I learned about the Bible and things like that is we were born for such a time as this. We, all of us sitting here, were born for these times to be tougher than we are, than to be tougher than we think we are. So, thank you for hearing me out.
Okay, thank you, Ed. And, Ed, I'll just say this, I didn't have to let you up here.
I understand it.
Okay, I did this because I know you and I know your passion and I know your commitment.
Yes, sir.
And I know you're disappointed.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I thank you for your comments.
And again, I didn't mean to insult any of you.
You're fine.
Excuse me, telling you, my heart's breaking. I didn't mean to insult any of y'all. But just as we know, when we step into that shoes you're stepping into, you know, we gotta put a turtle shell on our back. And nothing was personal, please believe that. I respect y'all as commissioners.
Okay, thank you, Ed.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Adamsak?
I agree with you 100%, I'm embarrassed sitting here today, by the way, we handled all the money. So I chose not to speak, to stop from saying something I'd regret. So I'm not gonna say anything I'm gonna regret, but I agree with you wholeheartedly. I think we missed an opportunity to not be political, we missed an opportunity to be for the people. That disheartens myself, same way. You and I don't always see eye to eye, and this one, I'm 100% with you. I look at it opposite, if we can't sit here as a commission and allow the citizens to possibly offend us by displaying their emotions and their passion and their needs and representing, you're representing thousands of people in this community, Ed, every time you've come here about this subject. And I appreciate that wholeheartedly and the passion you have for that is very significant, very important. And if this commission is to shut someone like you down for any reason, it would be despicable, so, thank you.
Can we adjourn now?
That's, um, public comment was over. This is my meeting, I can make that decision. I decided to make the right decision and let Mr. Kilabru come up. If it had been somebody else, I probably would have let them come up too. I hope you forgive me for that or commend me for it, either way. And I respect what he, and I had a feeling what he might say, okay? So we allowed that to happen and I appreciate his comments. I will never not let somebody speak and I have never done that. In my closing comments, we knew, I knew, okay? This is not the first tough decision we've had to make as a commission, this is my sixth year. And I knew we would please some people and I knew we would piss some people off, okay? Or aggravate them, all right, felt we let them down. But we have decisions to make and I think we made these decisions. In closing, I want to thank Julianne and Administrator Suggs and the staff because whether or not the rail spur was in emergency or not, it was shutting down Veritas Steel. And I saw them in action. Julianne was on the computer, she was on her laptop, she was on the phone, probably two phone conversations at the same time, trying to make sure that we could talk to somebody that would listen to us, that what has been happening out there was okay with the previous inspector, to keep this business open. So I just, as a commissioner, as a chairman, I want to thank both of you because I saw them in action and without their efforts, it probably would have been locked till we had a meeting, until we maybe had to do something else to get them to unlock it. So thank you so much. I appreciate everybody, any further business, we stand adjourned.